Good evening, Board Members, Staff, Administrators, Community. I would like to call our Lindop Board Meeting to order at five thirty P M. Have a roll call, please.
For President Hannah.
Present.
For Vice President Taylor.
Present.
For Secretary Griffin.
Present.
For Member Buchanan.
Present.
For Member Dawson, absent. For Member Williams Wilford, present. Oh, for Member Morris, absent.
All right, when we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. We'll pause for a moment of silence. During this time, can we please make sure all cell phones are on, um, vibrate and or silent? And also during this time, um, I ask that you keep our fellow board member, Mr. Morris and his family in your prayers as, um, he's dealing with the loss of a loved one this week. So please keep his family and him in your prayers. Thank you. All right, thank you. We're gonna move on to public comment, and we have one. Um, Ms. Latisa Jones from the Village of Bradview.
Good evening, Board. May I ask Dr. Jackson to come up, please? Thank you. Um, Board, I just want to tell you, I stand here on behalf of our Mayor, Mayor Katrina R. Thompson, and our Board of Directors and our staff, and we just want to present a small token to Dr. Jackson for always being supportive during our Juneteenth events and overall of our village. So we do. Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Moving right along for your request, um, Dr. Jackson, as soon as she has a seat.
Yes. Good afternoon, Board of Education, Community and Staff Members. We did have one for your request, uh, from Smart Care, Smart Procure Care. And this is one that comes out probably about every other month to find out who our vendors are that for you has been satisfied.
Thank you so much. As we move right along, upcoming events and correspondence, Madam Secretary.
Okay, on Thursday, July twentieth at five P M., we have the Freedom School Grand Finale at Lindop Gymnasium. Tuesday, August fifteenth at five thirty P M., we have the Board of Education meeting for Lindop in the gymnasium. And that would complete all of the upcoming events and correspondence.
Thank you so much, Madam Secretary. As we move right along, cuz in agenda, um, I'll make that motion. I make a motion that the Board approve the regular open session meeting minutes for June twentieth twenty twenty-three. The regular closed session meeting minutes for June twentieth twenty twenty-three. The special open session meeting minutes for June twenty-eighth twenty twenty-three. The special closed session meeting minutes for June twenty-eighth twenty twenty-three. Lindop District ninety-two payroll for June twentieth twenty twenty-three through July seventeenth twenty twenty-three in the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. Account, activity account reconciliation for June twenty twenty-three and the Lindop District ninety-two accounts payable for June twentieth twenty twenty-three through July seventeenth twenty twenty-three in the amount of six hundred and sixteen thousand, fifty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. Can I have a second, please?
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
All right, roll call. Uh, one, we got a question?
Yes, can we remove the closed session minutes for June twentieth? And the spe- um, the special closed session minutes on June twenty-eighth? I'm sorry, June twenty-eighth can stay, but the closed session on June twentieth. For the regular Board Me- Meeting, please.
Okay. All right, roll call, please. Oh, Dr. Jackson?
And so, um, since those have been pulled out, those need to be, they'll be voted on separately.
Okay.
Right.
Read the.
So you're gonna redo the motion, not excluding number two and excluding number five?
No, no, no. Five can stay. I said I made a mistake.
Um, so just number two?
Close, close.
Number two. Just number two.
Two.
That's five, I was present.
Okay, is, is that for the regular closed session meeting minutes?
Just number two. For regular clothes.
Regular clothes, right?
So omit that one and the next one and then do it separately. Thank you.
All right. All right, so I'll make the motion again. I make a motion that the Board approve the regular open session meeting minutes for June twentieth twenty twenty-three. The special open session meeting minutes for June twentieth twenty twenty-three. The special closed session meeting minutes for June twenty-eighth twenty twenty-three. And Lindop District ninety-two payroll for June twentieth twenty twenty-three through July seventeenth twenty twenty-three in the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. Activity account reconciliation for June twenty twenty-three and the Lindop District ninety-two account payable for June twentieth twenty twenty-three through July seventeenth twenty twenty-three in the amount of six hundred and sixteen thousand, fifty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. Have a second, please.
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Roll call.
For Member Buchanan.
Yay. Present.
For Vice President Taylor.
Yay.
For Member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
For Secretary Griffin.
Yay.
For President Hannah.
Yeah.
For Member Dawson.
Yay.
For Member Morris, absent. Whatever.
And then we'll do that one. Um, I'll make a motion that the Board approve the regular closed session meeting minutes for June twentieth twenty twenty-three.
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Roll call, please.
For President Hannah.
Yeah.
For Vice President Taylor.
Yay.
For Secretary Griffin.
Yay.
For Member Buchanan.
Yay.
For Member Dawson.
Yay.
For Member Morris, absent. For Member Williams Wilford, absent.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to old business, um, update on masonry project. Mr. Valentine.
Good evening, Board of Education, Community and Staff. Want to update you on the masonry project we have going on. Everything is going really well with the construction project right now. They started on the north end of the building and working their way south in the real parking lot. The Folsom City announced areas that they have completed. Last time we requested a change order to take down the chimney, they have, have now got it down to a level that what we wanted it to be. There's another area that's completed. This is like in the middle, well, by the art and Spanish classroom. They finished, finally last this last week. This is the last area they're working on, going towards the primary wing. And we have a substantial completion date of August fifth for all of them. But then proactively, we did look around the campus and see if we needed any other masonry work done while we have the contractors here. So we did request another change order. Uh, the change order we asked was to look at the concrete columns inside the courtyard. The retaining wall that's also inside the courtyard. And the bench that's located, concrete bench that's located right outside the main office. None of these issues are any safety issues right now. The retaining wall is not falling apart or the column is not structured. But we did want them to give us prices to address things. So we are asking that we do accept the first two change orders, which is the concrete columns and the retaining wall. The concrete bench, we're gonna patch that up in-house. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Any, any questions from the Board?
Is there any reason why we wanted to do the bench in-house versus allowing them to do it?
So we, the bench, the problem with the bench is the concrete underneath it is starting to settle. So we asked them to do something like quick to fix it up, which we can do inside in-house. But that is on our long-term life safety, life safety plan, and when we start doing cement work, our future plan is to remove that concrete bench and put in a metal bench eventually.
Any other Board members? Mr. Valentine, thank you, sir. All right, I have a motion to accept the missionary project change.
I make a motion that the Board approve and accept the missionary project change order with chafe construction in the amount of eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars to be paid from the project allowance budget.
Hannah, I second.
For Secretary Griffin.
Yay.
For Member Buchanan.
Yay.
For President Hannah.
Yeah.
For Member Dawson.
Yay.
For Member Morris, absent. For Vice President Taylor.
Yay.
For Member Williams Wilford.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Okay, um, Ms. Griffin?
Yes. Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion that the Board approve the Board Policy two point two two zero, which changes as presented.
Well, Member Buchanan, I second.
Any, any discussions?
Yes, could you elaborate on what's meant by a special, a special board meeting must be, take place to discuss removal of a board member? If a board member misses five board meetings within a year because the state law states that a board member can only be removed if they have a felony. So can you explain?
Okay, so what this policy change is saying is not saying that we're trying to remove any board members of, of that nature. What we're saying is that for any board member that hasn't been present or will not be present, um, that vote will come from the entire Board. The entire Board will vote on it if that Board, any particular Board member should be allowed or present at, at the meeting. So it's not that we're trying to exclude anybody or anything of that nature. It's just stating that from here moving forward, that if a board member needs to be virtual, it will become before the whole Board, the whole Board, excuse me, and the Board would then vote, should that board be allowed to attend the meeting.
But that's not what this says. This says a special board meeting must take place to discuss removal of a board member if a board member misses five board meetings within a year. And local law cannot trump state law. What you stated was something totally different than what this board policy reflects. And local law can never trump state law. So can you, someone expound upon this policy change?
Okay. Jay, you wanna chime in on it?
So for, um, so all it is, is so it should not say anything about removing the board member. That's not it, but uh, what it is stating is that if there is in the law, you all have your policy in front of you. What the law, what your policy says is that it has to be, um, voted on before someone can come in virtually. But it also says that it is just if there is an emergency to come in virtually and that it should not be continuous. I sent you all an email um, regarding this, uh, last week. So it should be at the top of your, if you wanna look at that email.
But what's in front of us does not state what Dr. Jackson, what you said, or Board President, what you said. And currently, state law says that if you, um, there's specific reasons why you can join virtually.
Correct.
And so this right here is at the local level and local level can never trump state law. So can somebody?
So.
Expound upon what you're saying verbally is totally different than what's written in this policy.
Okay, I I believe that there's two things that you mentioned of that falls under two, uh, colon, two point O for the Board Education Meeting Policy Procedure. So a special board, uh, meeting must take place to discuss the removal of a board member if a board member misses five board meetings within a year. This was already in the policy. We just never had a, a, a number attached to it. It was blank. So if you go on board books, you'll see that the original policy in there, the dates are just blank. We were just identifying a date. In regards to the second part of this, it's in, uh, board books as well, is, is not removing. Uh, the Board is not trying to remove any board member at all. That's not the goal and that's not the task. What it is saying is that Open Meetings Act states that, um, there are several, uh, excursions that a board member commits. It's work, it was, I don't have the, the details in front of me, but it was like your job, uh, illness, uh, you taking care of a loved one, et cetera, et cetera. Open Meetings Act states that you only need four board members present to do any voting on, and on a board, uh, agenda item.
Absolutely.
What the Board is saying is that in terms, we don't want to exclude any board member. What we saying is if we don't have proper, um, I don't wanna say anything that's out of term as far as what legal has said. But what, what we are saying is that we want every board member present. We don't want board members to, um, what's the right word? To consistently.
Basically, it's that he said there should be a rare occurrence of people taking, uh, what is it, meetings via phone or Zoom? He said that that's for particular reasons. You can't just continuously do that.
Again, what is written in this policy and what was said is night and day. The language does not mirror what either Board President said, nor what Superintendent Jackson said.
Well, I think they were, uh, talking about, under the policy, it was two different things, Ms. Williams Wilford. And, uh, your specific question was in regards to the number of days. And as I stated, the policy was there currently, but the far as the number, it was blank. It was just an old policy. I mean, when you go into board book, I don't know if you can go in there on your phone. It shows just a line item there. Is this a line? It doesn't have a specific data in there. So what this Board has brought forth is that if the Board misses, if a board member misses more than five days and that's throughout the calendar year, that this Board can bring a special meeting and decide if that board member should be, uh, permanently, uh, removal should happen.
Right, exactly. And once again, local law, law cannot trump states, okay? Local law cannot trump state any day and state can't trump federal.
Okay.
This is a local law we're trying to policy, we're trying to make. And so what state law says is if a board member does not have a felony, not accused of a felony, you have to be convicted of a felony in order to be removed from the Board. No matter how many meetings they miss, as we recall with other board members, that we had the same discussion with Russ Forty. Correct, Ms. Taylor? Do you recall? With QB?
Yeah, I recall that situation, but.
And so, fel- a person has to have a felony in order to be removed from a Board. The Board does not have authority to remove anyone. So my question is what you guys said and what's written in this policy and what's up for this, what we just motioned now is what's written in this policy, not what you said verbally, what is before us in writing now. And it does not mirror what neither one of you said. And again, it cannot, and as a person that's been over policy since two thousand and six, that was something that we overlooked. And we go over these policies all the time. We have a, a strategic, uh, plan to review every policy within every two years. So it's an oversight on the entire policy committee. Okay, so how do we?
We're, we're not.
Policy for this trumping state law?
That's not what this is saying, Board Member Williams Wilford. What, what it's saying is that we had a policy in place, and as I stated before, if you go to board book.
But what we're talking about right now is what's before us now.
Right, that, that's it. That's before us. It's in your board book. It has the old policy and it has the new poly, policy. It's the same verbiage. But what I'm saying is this. Absolutely. It's the same policy. Nothing has changed. It's the same policy. It was just revised with a number, a number as far as days. So the Board didn't change or adding anything here.
But you just said you did change it. You added a number.
The, the language is the same.
You added a number.
Are we voting?
Yes.
Can we vote?
Blank. It was blank. So this went to, this went to the attorneys. The attorneys reviewed it and told us that we should have a date in there.
So the attorneys is saying, so Superintendent Jackson, attorney is stating that we're gonna trump at a local level state law? Is that what our legal team is advising us to do? So at a local level to create a policy that trumps state policy?
No, it is not. The, uh, policy is coming forward to say that the, everyone has, you have to have a form of the votes before someone can come in virtually.
That's not what that says. Do you have the same thing I have? It says a special board meeting must take place to discuss removal of a board member if a board member misses five board meetings within a year. That's what's on this policy, not what neither one of you have just said.
And so, um, President, so the discussion is not about removal. The discussion is on making sure that everyone knows that there has to be a quorum voted before someone can come in.
Correct.
The vote. So then you need to restate what it is without that part about removal. And then also talk about, um, it is just to have a quorum for someone to be able to come in virtually.
So is this being stricken from this policy? Is that what we're saying?
No. This, this is the actual policy. This is the policy. This was already in place, Ms. Williams Wilford. The only thing that was highlighted in your package to bring you attention to, just in case you didn't have your, uh, board books open, was to show you that this was the original policy. However, the word five was not in there. It's just a line in the original policy.
I heard you the first time we said that.
Yeah, this is just part of it. There's a part two of this that will, that say here as well.
I don't, I'm, I'm very, I'm able to read. I don't have any literacy deficits.
So what, what we took, um, basically for the, and this is from legal that we spoke to in regards to the change of this policy. Um, is, is so that, that we meet the requirements of the Open Meetings Act, attended virtually, see only be for special occasions. So Ms. Williams Wilford, we're not saying that we're like, like Board Vice President has just stated, Dr. Jackson stated, we're not saying that we're trying to push anybody out or anything like that. Um, they added a number to that part of it. The second part of what we're voting on here tonight is that for any board member to be able to attend virtually. And that's for any board member, not one specific board member. If anyone wants to attend virtually, the entire Board will make that decision. We'll either vote yay or nay for a board member to be allowed to attend any board meeting, meeting here forward virtually. That's it.
On the, um, suggested revised copy, Ms. Williams Wilford, on page four or five on the bottom is the underlining. If this was a discussion in regards to like the notifications of why a board member, um, you know, if they wish to miss a meeting, these things are here as an examples, and that's fine. That's part of the Open Meetings Act. That's nothing that we trying to change as a Lindop School Board. The change is coming into play to say that if a board member, um, the, the, the privileges of not being in-house, there's no longer a meeting video or audio conference that he or she can do. That the board member should be physically in attendance, and that's on the bottom of page four or five. So this is a part of Open Meetings Act. It's not to discourage any board members.
I'm versed with Open Meetings Act.
Huh?
I'm fully versed about the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm just letting you know that where it's coming from, and it's on the bottom of page four or five.
And I got one, one more thing to read. Um, I am, I am. Two, Policy two point six zero, Board Member Removed From Office. Okay? If a majority.
Where you at? Where you at?
No, I'm reading, I'm reading the policy from.
Oh, okay, all right.
Wait, where are you reading? I couldn't hear you.
Policy two point six zero?
Okay.
Oh, we don't have that?
No, I'm reading it from our Lindop District ninety-two. Okay.
Okay.
But I thought the motion on the floor is two point two two.
Yeah, since we're talking about removal of a board member, I'm just gonna read to you removal of a board member from office that's in board book, that's on all of Lindop stuff, okay? If majority of, of the Board of Education determines that a board member has willfully failed to perform his or her official duties, it may request the Regional Superintendent to remove such member from office. Okay? What we got from legal today? So that, like I said, so that we meet the requirements of, of the Open Meetings Act, attended virtually should only be allowed for special occasions, not all the time. Not, and, um, this also says no longer will this be allowed automatically where a board member could call and say, hey, I'm gonna be virtual, send me a link. That won't happen. That stops. If, if this passes, that ends today. Okay, the entire Board must agree on the reason, the reason why a, a specific board member should be allowed to attend virtually. Opens Meeting Act states, it Opens Meeting Act does not grant board members the ability to attend remotely. This new policy is saying that the entire Board must agree on the reason why a board member is allowed to retain, to attend remotely. Okay? All right. Anything else?
Yeah, so.
Yes.
I, I'm just wanna ask some quick questions. Just so basically, all it is saying is that if we're in a meeting, somebody wants to attend, they say I'm sick. We would take a vote on whether or not we all feel that they're sick and they would attend.
Correct. All right. And that, that'll be done in the open session.
All right.
Does the Board currently feel that a board member is not, um, fulfilling their duty or obligation as you read in two point two six? Two two six?
Not that. What we're feeling is that we want the entire Board to be here together. We're, we're trying to make things happen here in the district, and we need the entire Board to fulfill that, that, that exact thing. We don't wanna leave anybody out. We want the entire, all seven of us that's sitting around this table and, and said, Mr. Morrison, here's absent. The entire Board to be a part of everything that we do. Okay? All right.
All right. Uh, and also just, we got the original copy of that two twenty. And then we got the revised copy of that two twenty, and so we're adding in where this little green mark says to two twenty.
Yes.
Right, is that what we're doing, Dr. Jackson?
I'm sorry.
Right?
Ask again.
So we got the original of two twenty, and then we got the revised, and somebody put the green mark. So we got the original of two twenty, and then we got the revised, and somebody put the green mark on here saying. This what we're revising, and then y'all highlighted it, because this is the original, this is.
Look on the last page of that revised.
That is, that is the last page.
I'm sorry, the fourth page.
It was already. It didn't call out the number.
No, it, it wasn't. Y'all gave us the original.
No, that's not what we're saying. I'm saying look at page four or five.
Right.
Down at the bottom.
Yeah. No, four or five is different.
Four of five.
That's, that's the one that's, that's different. But I mean, you gave us the original, and then you gave us the revised, and in the revised, I said, why do we highlight it?
It should have been the bottom where. Present shall, present shall conduct a vote in open session.
That's the revised version. Right. But you highlighted this under revised, saying it was a revision, cuz it's not on the original.
It's on the original. It's on four or five, but the apparently the copy that we have is.
Was different, okay.
It's cut off. It's right here at the bottom. Attend a meeting in a meeting by audio or video. That's cut off. So then therefore we just needs to give the board. A clean copy of the original policy.
She's talking, she's talking from the original copy.
I know, I'm, so I'm looking at the original, and I was looking for the language, a special board meeting must take place to discuss. That's not on the original. I think they were saying that it was. It didn't have a number or something like that. I'm just trying to make sure we got it right. I'm on the policy committee, so I know it's gonna be on my head.
It's the, it's the bottom. It's the bottom. Although the first part, it does still, it goes to policy two colon sixty. But what they are voting on and what you have to change the uh the motion to is about the verbatim, verbatim meetings.
Yeah, I'm just asking about this one sentence, where this came from. It's not in the original two twenty. Is it from two sixty, and then we're putting it into twenty as a revision? That's all, all I'm saying.
It's, it's from two sixty.
Okay, so it's not in the two twenty.
It's not in the two twenty.
Okay, that's what I was asking, cuz it's not here. Everything else is the same in two twenty, except this one line.
Right, and that's.
See what I'm saying? So we're taking something from two sixty, and now it's in the revised copy of two twenty. Which is cool. I just wanna make sure we got it right. I just wanna make sure we got it right. Six oh, alright.
Got it.
Okay.
So that way, if we vote, we're saying, look, we're voting, we're taking this little thing from two sixty, we're putting it into twenty, and we're just adding. Page four or five, this paragraph in here. But we would have to say that's what we're doing, cuz we're saying this is the original, this is the revised. Y'all highlighted it to say, look, this is different. So I'm saying, it, it does seem it's like it's different.
Okay, so if you go into your board books, um and you look on Lindop Policy. Under two colon sixty, it talks about the board member removal of office?
And it says that special, that sentence, a special board member.
It don't say special. It says if a majority of the Board of Education. Determines that a board member has willfully failed to perform his or her official duties. It may request a regional superintendent to remove such member from office.
I don't argue that. As the Chair of the Policy Committee, what I'm saying is, this is the original copy. This is the suggested revise. We are saying we're about to vote on two twenty. When we vote, we will then be voting on what is written here now in two twenty. Which was not in the original. If that's what the board does, that's cool.
We not voting on this. Voting on the, on the, the five days. The five days is under.
We are voting.
Can we get a copy?
To approve board policy two twenty.
So it won't be an issue.
A copy of what?
The original that has that statement where it's not cut off.
Like, that's what she gave us. Oh, so what you're saying is that sentence was at the bottom of this page.
Correct.
But it was cut off. That's, that's what I'm trying to. Because then it's a move point, and then it's like it was already there in the original bone. So we should be able to look it up on board books in the two twenty, and it'll be there, and then it's kinda squashed.
Yes, sir.
So if I have my laptop, I, I would do it. I just didn't bring it. It's, it's, it's on the uh school's website.
Is there anything else?
We're gonna defer to the email from the attorney.
Excuse me, for President, I need to leave. I have to be, had to be a work at six, so just trying to stay for the discussion. Have a great day, you guys.
Thank you.
What's on the agenda to be voted on is two point uh two colon two twenty. The portion of the revision was two colon two forty. So two twenty. And maybe this sticky shouldn't have been on here. So on page four or five, you saying that this sentence was originally on the bottom?
This sentence is the one that's talking about the open session and the provided of form. And if you look at your email that I sent you all on Saturday, it has it, and it says is the next steps for adopting a policy are outline and board policy. Two colon two forty. If the board has an existing policy committee, the policy committee should review. The proposed changes and bring that back to the board with the recommendation. As, as an example, to adopt the revisions, this can be done at the next board meeting if the policy committee can meet before then. Cuz you already presented the draft at one meeting. Policy two colon two four zero states that you cannot. Adopt the change at the first board meeting which it was presented. If there is no policy committee, then you can proceed, proceed directly to the next board meeting with an agenda item to adopt. The policy revisions, the board president uh would be setting that agenda.
So if, if we have a policy committee, the policy committee would look at this.
If we had a meeting, yes.
I'm sorry, what?
If we had a meeting.
Yes, so since we have a co- policy committee, it, the lawyer said it should go to the policy committee. And after it goes to the policy, right, so we could have called one, we could have had a meeting over it. That did not happen. Now we're here.
Okay.
I'm, I'm asking a simple question.
The reason.
We can knock this out in thirty seconds.
The reason that, that it didn't go to a policy committee meeting, because there wasn't one prior to this board meeting. And not only yourself, Ms. Williams Wilford, but the rest of the policy committee meeting, is it wasn't present to have a policy committee meeting?
Cuz it was on the, that email was sent on what, the twenty-fourth of June or something like that, right? Twenty-first, twenty-fourth, right?
Right.
And we usually meet the first Wednesday of the month when we can.
Right.
We could have met that first week in July. Doesn't matter. All I would say is this. If you got your computer up, you could look on our board policies right now, right? You can pull it up, and you could look at two twenty. And you could see if this one sentence is in there. If it's in there, it's a move point. Because it's always been in the policy. We could vote on this, and it's done, and nobody would be able to say that somebody added something in. Or anything changed, because it would already have been in there. Is, it, what I'm saying making sense? Because the only thing that seems to be the sticking point is whether this was in policy two twenty already.
I believe the sticking point is that they felt as though, or a board member felt as though. That we're trying to get rid of them, and that's not what we're trying to do.
Right, and so, yeah, yeah, I, I would agree with that point.
You wanna change the uh motion to reflect um. Right.
To allow anyone to come in virtually.
Okay, so Brian, I think what, what they're saying, and if you wanna take my laptop, you can, or you can come over and look at it.
If you got it, I'm, I believe it.
No, no, no. So what, what I'm saying for the record.
Right.
Is that policy two point two four oh for the board policy development, and in paragraph number.
Oh wait, just, just for a second, just so we on the same page. We're voting on two point two zero.
But they, they entered twine.
That's where I'm coming from. So if you have a policy, and you change it. And you say we're gonna take this policy, and it's gonna go in here, and then we're gonna vote on it.
So it's already in two colon two four zero.
Got you.
So the highlighted part with the, with the flag by it is just saying that that goes with this. You already have that in two colon two forty. But the changes are underlined on page four or five, and that's when it talks about the form.
So, so I, I get what you're saying. So then the actual, and I think I'm overstepping my.
Go ahead.
I think what, what should happen is just um on this actual um. Motion, we can add both. So if it comes into play, we can see that it was two point two four oh and two point two. Oh, because it is, they talking about the same thing, but it's a sentence in here that's captured in two places.
Alright, and what I, what I'm, uh, what I'm saying is it making sense? Like if you say this is the original, this is the revised, and you put something in that wasn't in there, and then we vote on it. We're saying, yes, we all agree to this too. That was the point I was making. I was like, no, we didn't do that in the policy meeting. That was just done now. I just had to make a sticking point of it being the Chair, and y'all would do the same thing if it was y'all committed, like, hey, this isn't exactly what, what happened. We can vote, we can go forward, but for a point of order, I just had to say, hey, that's not actually the policy. And you're saying, hey, it's not. It's out of a different policy, and we placed it in here, and now we can vote on it. That's cool.
Uh what I would suggest is that you, you add uh policy two point two four oh um in the motion. And then therefore, it's, we will be covered under two point two oh and two point two four oh.
Okay, Madam Secretary, you mind if I read that motion?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, here we go. I make the motion that the board approve policy two point two zero. And two point two four zero with changes as presented. Can I have a second, please?
Cheryl Briff, and I second.
Roll call, please.
For President Hannah. For Member Buchanan.
Yay.
For Member Dawson.
Abstain.
For Secretary Griffin.
Yay.
For Vice President Taylor.
Yay.
For Member Williams Wilford, absent. For Member Morris, absent.
Motion carries. Moving right along to the new business. Mister, alright.
Yes, sir. Um well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Jackson, staff members of the community. Uh first off, I just wanted to say, you know, this is my first meeting as your new business manager. I wanted to extend my gratitude to you as a board, Dr. Jackson, for giving me that opportunity. I'm very excited to be here and be a part of the team, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Um the next item on the agenda is regarding the I M R F Authorized Agent. As you know, certain employees of the district are eligible for I M R F pension. And by state law, it's required that the district appoint a single person as the authorized agent. With school districts, it's commonplace to have the business manager or chief school business official to be appointed to that position. The main powers and duties of the agent would be to enroll new members, so if there's any new, new employees that are eligible for I M R F. Um that authorized agent would handle that, as well as making sure proper deductions from payroll are made to make payments to I M R F. To notify the board of any new rates or changes with I M R F, and to assist members with any of the issues they may have. So the next uh resolution would be to simply authorize me as the next authorized agent to be able to handle all those duties. Are there any questions or discussion?
Alright, thank you, Mister Arndt. With that being said, um I need a motion to approve the resolution to appoint and authorize Illinois. I M R F agent.
Board Member Buchanan, I make a motion that the board approve the resolution to appoint the authorization Eleanor Municipal Retirement Fund. I M R F agent.
In a second.
My second, Brian Dawson.
Roll call, please.
For Member Dawson.
Yay.
For Secretary Griffin.
Yay.
For Member Buchanan.
Yay.
For President Hannah.
Yay.
For Vice President Taylor.
Yay.
For Member Morris, absent. For Member Williams Wilford, absent.
Alright, motion carries.
Alright, um if you wanna read the.
Go ahead.
Um the next item is a resolution for a transfer from the Working Cash Fund. Uh this would be an abatement in the amount of seven hundred thousand dollars from Working Cash to the Operations and Maintenance Fund, and then eventually to the Capital Projects Fund. The seven hundred thousand dollars originated from the Working Cash Fund bond issue.
Don't we have to uh approve him first?
We are, we are. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry, Mister Arndt.
Hire you for a second. Yeah, we got, we gotta hire you.
Here we go, Mister.
Um I'd like to make a motion that the board approve Mister Andrew Arndt, Business Manager, be, to become the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund Agent.
My second, Hannah.
For Secretary Griffin.
Yay.
For Member Buchanan.
Yay.
For President Hannah.
Yeah.
For Member Dawson.
Yay.
For Board Vice President Taylor.
Yay.
For Member Morris, absent. For Member Williams Wilford, absent.
Motion carries, Mister Arndt.
There we go. Alright, so the next item is uh, well, do you wanna read this part of it, or do I need to read it?
Go ahead, you got it.
Uh is recommending the approval of a resolution to authorize the abatement of funds from the Working Cash Fund in the amount of seven hundred thousand dollars. This would move the funds from the Working Cash Fund to the Operation and Maintenance Fund temporarily, and then eventually to the Capital Projects Fund. Uh the seven hundred thousand dollars originates from the Working Cash Fund bond issue that the district undertook last year. Um the reason for the temporary movement to operations and maintenance and not going straightly to, straight to capital projects. Is that any funds moved to capital projects are locked in capital projects. But if we're able to move the funds temporarily to O and M, that would free us up in the case of an emergency to be able to use those funds for other projects. And we would still have funds in working cash that'd be available uh to then be moved at a future date. So this resolution would allow for both of those movements to occur at a later date as needed. And this would cover the rest of the masonry work that's already in progress, as well as the, the chiller replacement that's coming later this year. Any questions on this?
Any questions, board members?
Uh no.
Alright, Vice President Taylor.
I make a motion that the board approve the resolution authorizing the abatement of funds from Working Cash, the seven hundred thousand. For transfer to the Capital Project Fund.
Cheryl Briff, and I second.
Roll call, please.
For President Hannah.
Yeah.
For Vice President Taylor.
Yay.
For Secretary Griffin.
Yay.
For Member Buchanan.
Yeah.
For Member Dawson.
Yay.
For Member Morris, absent. For Member Williams Wilford, absent.
Motion carries. Moving right along, discussion on twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four board retreat. It's that, Board President Hannah, that's me. Alright, so. Is that Board President Hannah, that's me. All right, so. Um this past weekend, we were able to attend our board retreat, which is basically um professional development for the board. Um it was wonderful. We got to meet with our facilitator, Jeff Cohen. And it just was a a very good time for the board to get together and talk about things that we want. To happen for the district, um our board goals and where we want to go for this twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year. Um it was amazing. We had a wonderful time. We learned a lot of things about each other. Um working with each other and just growing in our relationship as a board and moving forward in the right direction. Um so let me say thank you to the community um for allowing us to be able to do things like this. Uh any board members want to add to that?
Cheryl Griffin, I think it's important to bring up that we did discuss the necessity for the board to do more things together. Out socially, so I had spoke with the particular, the interest was for a bowling event. And I had spoke with a bowling alley in Berwyn, which is newly renovated, and they had stated that we could do that and there was no problem with that. And you can bowl for one hour for ten dollars or two hours for fifteen dollars per place. And they do have food, but we're also welcome to bring our own food in.
Anyone else? Mr. Dawson, Mr. Buchanan?
Nope, I think you said it best.
Tanya Taylor, my sentiments are exactly, I think that for the board retreat, it was putting aboard. Uh the group of seven in the same uh headspace to understand the outcome of the calendar of what we want to see the school district. Uh rise to the occasion for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year. Um it was very important to have the professional development, uh something that the board wants to seek to do more of. Just putting like minds together just to um understand uh and to reflect of our um superintendent. And the admin um staff, where we want to see the future of the state of the school for the next calendar year. So it's very important that each board member understands and is on the same page to understand what our focus is going forward for the next school year. So it was pleasing to the ear. We had a good time. We bonded, we shared, we uh fellowshipped. And it was a good time here about all, and I just want to thank um the administrative team. And the staff and the community for allowing us to just take time out um of this weekend. You know, uh we met Friday evening, we had a working uh dinner meeting. We met all day Saturday from nine to three. There wasn't any shortcut, limited breaks. And then we also um met again on Sunday morning and was dismissed um approximately at noon. So it just really gave us a good uh headspace. And agreement to what we want to see on the calendar going forward and just understanding all the opportunities that the superintendent brought for. And we just want to say thank you.
Indeed, indeed. Okay. So I make the motion that the board approve and adopt the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four board goals and strategic. Priorities as agreed upon at the board retreat.
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Roll call, please.
Secretary Griffin.
Yay.
President Hannah.
Yeah.
Vice President Taylor.
Yay.
For Member Dawson.
Yeah.
For Member Buchanan.
Yeah.
For Member Morris, absent. For Member Williams Wilford, absent.
Motion carries. I need I need a motion to approve the use of S B C for waste.
Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion that the board approve to enter into contract with S B C. For waste and recycling pickup at a cost of. Four hundred and ten dollars per month to be paid from the operations and maintenance fund.
And Board Member Hannah, I second. And before we vote, Mr. Valentine.
Good evening again, Board of Education, community and staff. So we recently did audit of our waste collection system. We went out and got quotes from different vendors. Uh our current vendors group, we currently pay eight hundred ninety eight dollars a month uh for waste and recycle pickup. We got another uh quote from Love Brothers. Uh they quoted us at six hundred and sixty seven dollars a month and S B C at four hundred and ten dollars a month. Uh we'd like to go with S B C, not just because they're the cheapest company, but they also located here in Broadview, so my nightingale company. And uh their price lock is not there for three years, and so each of these other companies want to increase each year. Any questions?
Nothing from the board?
And we also had a few issues, right, with group before?
Yes, group sometime they uh don't pick up on certain days. Uh we can assure us from S B C, they're gonna even pick up on holidays. So I think S B C is the right way to go.
Thank you for the work, for bringing this to us with the comparisons. That's much appreciated.
And it's a woman-owned business.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Valentine. Ms. Carter, roll call, please.
For Secretary Griffins.
Yay.
For Member Buchanan.
Yay.
For Member Dawson.
Yay.
For President Hannah.
Yeah.
For Vice President Taylor.
Yay.
For Member Williams Wilford, absent. For Member we uh for Member Morris, absent.
Motion carries. All right, recommend approval to complete seal coating and re-stripping the parking lot. Vice President Taylor?
I make a motion that the board approve the completion, seal coating and re-stripping of the front and the west parking lot. By Pavement Systems Inc. at a total cost of eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy two dollars to be paid from the operations and maintenance fund.
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
All right, Mr. Valentine.
Good evening again. So we have three parking lots here with and and then uh one of them is the playground. We'd like to get them all sealed sealed coated and re-stripped before the start of school. Uh we're not gonna get quotes for this project. One quote came in at nineteen thousand seven hundred. The second quote came in eleven thousand three hundred and twenty two and ten cent. The last quote came in eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy two. I recommend that we go with pavement systems. We use pavement system since two thousand and seventeen. As you see that the most important part is they're gonna be putting two coats of filler now, which is what we really need. Uh I haven't had any problems with pavement system, so I think they should be able to take care of the job.
Thank you. Any questions, board members?
How long will it last, you know, before we have to reseal it?
So typically, you do it every two years.
All right, thank you. That's it.
Anyone else? All right, Ms. Carter, roll call, please.
For Member Buchanan.
Wait, one quick question. It said it'd be done over the weekend. What weekend?
Uh right after constructions, the subset substantial completion day is the construction is all this fill.
Okay.
So.
Before school.
Make sure they get all this stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Carter, roll call, please.
For Member Buchanan.
Yeah.
For Member Dawson.
Yeah.
For Secretary Griffin.
Yay.
For Vice President Taylor.
Yay.
For President Hannah.
Yeah.
For Member Morris, absent. For Member Williams Wilford, absent.
Motion carries. All right, recommend approval to contract for the Metro Chicago Mathematics Initiative.
Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion that the board approve the contract for the Metro Chicago Mathematics. And initiative, M C, M I, in the amount of four thousand dollars to be paid from the Title I grant.
My second.
All right, Dr. Betts.
Good evening, Board of Education, Administration and Staff. We are requesting that we be able to join. The Metro Chicago Mathematics Initiative or M C M I again this school year. As you know, um there's some research out there, especially one of our evaluation systems that we use here at Lindop. N W E A has recently posted an article about um the fact that students have not regained their math knowledge post pandemic. And so what we've noticed here at Lindop is that our curricular materials are not what they need to be, and we know that. But in addition to that, trying to get our students back up to speed after having been online for so long during the pandemic. Um has been a huge task. And so M C M I has been a tremendous help with that over the last school year. And right now they're offering for the upcoming school year twenty three, twenty four. Uh an opportunity for teachers to engage in four ninety minute virtual sessions, as well as two full day face-to-face sessions. So this is more than what they have typically offered in the past. Teachers who go to these sessions have the opportunity to really build their collaboration with other math teachers. And they gain a lot of confidence in math content knowledge. That helps them then to design engaging learning tasks for our students. And what we've noticed is that M C M I has really helped us for the teachers who have attended. Um their scores have remained stable or even gone up just a little bit, not enough, of course, but it's keeping us where we need to be. So the cost for M C M I keeps going down, used to be eight thousand, last year was six thousand, this year it's four thousand eight hundred. And um that would include all of the attendance at those events, as well as a day of onsite program monitoring. And the the company touching base with our teachers and doing some kind of mini coaching sessions with them about their math classes. Any questions?
One really quick question, Dr. Betts. Thank you um for your continue to strive and pull our resources for the students. And thank you for bringing something that worked. My question to you is. Um once the teachers engage and they get the ninety minute sessions and they get the two four days. Is Lindop a sign like a coach or um a mentor or someone? If a teacher feel like they missing a bolt on something or they didn't quite understand a particular lesson?
Thank you. That's a really good question. Thank you for asking. Yes, we have, so any teacher that goes to the sessions has direct contact with the person who delivered the session. They can contact them at any time. In addition to that, um the people who oversee M C M I contact me regularly and I talk to them all year long. Um and then they do have that day of coaching where teachers who have struggled can meet with someone face-to-face on our campus. They come to us. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, Dr. Betts, thank you. All right, roll call, please.
For Member Dawson.
Yay.
For President Hannah.
Yeah.
For Vice President Taylor.
Yay.
For Member Buchanan.
Yeah.
For Secretary Griffin.
Yay.
For Member Morris, absent. For Member Williams Wilford, absent.
Motion carries. I make, I need a motion to approve the contract for Northwest Evaluation Association. It's Dawson, but I I'll read it. Don't worry, Dee.
Okay, no, no, I got it. I I make a motion that the board approve the contract for Northwest Evaluation Association. The N W E A in the amount of five thousand eight hundred twenty six dollars and fifty cents to be paid from the Title I grant.
Mister Hen, Board President Hannah, I second. Doctor Betts and Doctor Jackson.
Good evening again. And um this is regarding the research company that I just mentioned had the data of regarding the students' math. Um growth over the post-pandemic. So the Northwest Evaluation Association, N W E A, has the test measures of academic progress. You've probably heard us talk about map scores. And it allows us to give three benchmark assessments during the school year, so three testing sessions per student per year. We test reading, language arts and math. We can also test science, which we do in fifth and eighth grade. We also have um a subscription associated with this where we can screen our preschoolers before they go into kindergarten. So this allows our teachers to project proficiency. So how is the student going to score on the state test? And it's been very, very spot on for us at Lindop. So we look at what it projects and then where we actually land. We're always two or three percentage points above what it projects consistently. It also gives our teachers a way to build a pathway for the student. So every child can have an individualized pathway to moving forward academically and meeting proficiency. And I don't know if there's any other, anything to add, Dr. J. Any questions?
On Cheryl Griffin, just for my own clarification, language arts, would that be like your English vocabulary or what?
Yeah, vocabulary usage, language usage, it could be grammar. So reading for map, reading is is really testing um comprehension. Prior to map, we have to test phonemic awareness and phonics. Um but that is something that precedes comprehension.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? If there are none, Ms. Carter, roll call, please.
For Vice President Taylor.
Yay.
For Member Dawson.
Yay.
For President Hannah.
Yeah.
For Member Buchanan.
Yeah.
For Secretary Griffin.
Yeah.
For Member Williams Wilford, absent. For Member Morris, absent.
Motion carries. All right, um recommend approval to contract Legacy Four Family LLC.
Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion that the board approve to contract Legacy Four Family LLC. Dr. Bessie Boyd as a consultant for the twenty twenty three school year. At five hundred dollars per day, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Woman, you count a second.
All right, Doctor Betts, Doctor Jackson.
Good evening again. We had Dr. Boyd with us on campus periodically last school year. She never did um get to the total amount of days that we could have had her for. But she was a huge assistance with our coaching of instruction. Um and so we are looking to frontload the school year by having the most of Dr. Boyd's support. Falling from the first week of school through the end of October. Her focus would be on coaching the instruction, but also she would be available to be a mentor to the principal and. Um assistant principal, as well as be a building assistant to, you know, do whatever needs to be done in the front office to support instruction. Overall. Are there any questions?
Anything, board members?
Really, really quick question, Tanya Taylor. Um you said that we had Dr. Boyd in the building last year. Was Dr. Boyd in the same capacity that we want to utilize the services for this school year?
She was mainly coaching middle school teachers in instruction, but she is a former principal. And she was very successful as a principal. She retired right before the pandemic. Um but she also then, um as we kind of got things moving with middle school, she did assist Ms. Oh. And Mr. Kenobi tremendously, as needed.
So we're more or less bringing in um Dr. Boyd as a mentor. Right? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, she will, she will have an opportunity to mentor the principal and assistant principal. She'll also be monitoring instruction. She'll work with the teachers. That would be kind of the building assistant portion. So anything instruction related.
Okay, and then the last part of my question to you guys is, as far as an assessment from last school year. Um did Dr. Boyd like do a presentation with the um team, the admin staff, superintendent, just to say, this is my feedback? This is where I think we should be going. And was that assessment, did you guys agree that that the assessment looked?
Yep, and in fact, we were able to um remediate some things that were going on. Because of her being in the classroom, being able to see them, particularly in the middle school.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, I had a question too, but Vice President Taylor just just asked that. Um how do you guys felt that Dr. Boyd did in the building last year? But no need for me to ask that, she asked it already.
Thank you.
All right, all right. Ms. Carter, roll call, please.
For Secretary Griffin.
Yay.
For Member Buchanan.
Yeah.
For President Hannah.
Yeah.
For Member Dawson.
Yeah.
For Vice President Taylor.
Yay.
For Member Morris, absent. For Member Williams Wilford, absent.
All right, motion carries. Moving right along to Board President report. That's my report. Um majority of what I was going to talk about in our report, we spoke about um briefly momentarily, well, a little bit ago. In regards to our board retreat. Um board retreat, like I said, was wonderful. Uh we got a lot accomplished, a lot of team building exercises to where we're moving forward as a team, which I think is wonderful. Um our personality traits, team building, that's that's really what we focused on, team building. And where I believe, in my opinion, that we're headed in the right direction as far as for team building. And getting to know, well, our newest board member, getting to know the rest of the board. Um so we went over our annual planning cycle. Uh we have dates coming up in October, January and April, just with check-ins. The check-ins will be with our um with the facilitator, Mr. Cohen. Um, that, the annual planning cycle, like I, I talked about a few minutes ago. Also.
So I'm sorry. So just a few of those have been um changed and those were, you'll see the uh date stricken with those. Because we just had our uh to decide on the goals that was changed from May, June to July. And then for number four. Uh, the board to evaluate its own processes and effectiveness, as you all talked about in the board retreat. Uh, to have those check-ins and meetings, uh, October, January and April.
That's correct.
But right now we are on track.
Alright, um, we also have a holiday dinner coming up. That will be Thursday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. And the board dinner with administrators Friday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Please mark your calendars.
We want the entire board to be there, not just some of us, everybody. We don't want anyone to feel like they're being left out. Okay? Alright, moving right along, superintendent's report.
Thank you so much. Good evening again. Alright, so uh what we've been doing with the admin team is talking about. Uh, not having a house divided. Um, this year has uh made us come together more closely. More closely ever than we have. Um, having a mad exodus in a sense. Uh, we did not lose as many as some other schools, but we left enough uh for us to pay attention to. And uh, as I had spoken during the retreat, uh, I had a temperature check, which I do every year. But this last one was at the end of the year and this year I'm going to do this differently. So we start right from the beginning. I'll have one in October, uh, January and then another one in April to keep the pulse. Before uh anything uh gets out of hand. Uh, we did know that a lot of people during their temperature checks, they talked about um. Being closer to home, they talked about money and they also talked about. Uh, making sure that the initiatives uh stayed the same. I've spoken it over with the admin team and. Uh, making sure that we're intentional, we're talking about something that we're going to do because. Everything is falling under literacy, but I don't think we do uh or have done before a good job in branding that. And saying that this next portion that we're going to do is also another part of literacy. Uh, some people were thinking that we were changing uh in the middle and we were not. So we're targeting and making sure that we do a better job with communicating and also making sure. Um, that we get that information and keep the uh finger on the pulse of the entire district more times than just at the end. Okay. Next, uh, we have the Grow Your Own. So our Grow Your Own uh project. Has been here for a while. You all heard from Mrs. Blake Brown when she talked a little bit about. Her um efforts to pass the state test and how she had to take it at least five times before she did. So we're looking at the barriers that have happened. Uh, Dr. Betts and I were able to present. At uh the National Alliance of Black School Educators Superintendent Summit last weekend. Uh, a weekend before this last one. Uh, and we talked about some of the barriers that have happened. And uh, what was very interesting is that we see where the uh test questions are being developed. That there are no uh people of color on those uh boards or organizations. And so um, we've uh sat or had uh Dr. Betts to go in and sort of. Sit in and as a panelist, but also be able to ask some of the hard questions because she is allowed into that room. And what we recognize is that there's some rooms that I'll be allowed into and they will welcome me gracefully. There's some that she will be, but the bottom line is for us to get to the bottom of this and to make sure that our uh black and brown teachers. Have an avenue of passing the test, but also as the questions are being prepared, that they are equitable for everyone who is taking them. Okay. Uh, next thing, uh, Mr. Ellis, you attended the uh Illinois State Technology. Uh, conference and uh there's his picture there. He had a good time. He came back with. So many things for us to be able to implement and, and showing me something that I was doing outdated and he's like, no click over here and then you can get it. But I do thank you, uh, Mr. Ellis, you for always going out, for finding the information and for bringing it back to us. Uh, next, as I'm progressing towards my goals for the year, community and district relations, our Freedom School Parent Event. Which was on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, where they came in and had an opportunity. To talk with their children about what they're learning in Freedom School and actually seeing some of the projects uh that they had done. Again, on five, uh, we have our finale. I hope that everyone has received their invitations. That is gonna be on Thursday, this Thursday. The twentieth, um, it begins at five P M until uh six, about six, six thirty. Doors open at four thirty P M. Please come out and join us. This will be the finale. We'll have um. We'll recognize some of the guest speakers that came in, uh, as well as our partners, um, who have been alongside us from the beginning. Did I capture everything? Doctor, okay, very good. Um, that will be here in the gymnasium on Thursday. So hopefully everyone will be able to come out. And that completes my superintendent report.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Before we move on, um, board members, I, I'm asking. That if possible, we all try to make that Freedom School finale this Thursday. If possible, all board members, that's the entire board. Try to be at this Freedom School finale. Um, this was something great that the school did this year. And I feel that we all need to be a part of the finale. Okay? Alright, moving right along, committee reports. Personnel committee meeting, Mr. Hannah and Ms. Griffin. Our next meeting is to be determined. Finance committee meeting, Ms. Griffin, Mr. Hannah. Next meeting is to be determined. Pace Governing Board Member, Mr. Dawson, Ms. Mr. Morris was held on Wednesday, June twenty-first. Twenty twenty-three at six P M. Their next meeting date is Wednesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. Mr. Dawson.
Oh yeah, so the next meeting is tomorrow, um. Basically what we did last month was hiring a new uh business official because our business official got snatched up and went to um District ninety-three. That was, that's all I really got to report.
Thank you, sir. Safety S E L Committee Meeting, Mr. Morris, Mr. Buchanan, Wednesday, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three at four. P M. That makes, next meeting date is to be determined. Anything, Mr. Buchanan? No? Alright, thank you, sir. Policy Committee Meeting, Meeting, Mr. Dawson and Ms. Williams Wilford. Their next meeting is to be determined.
And we do have a date. It's August ninth.
August ninth, thank you. Thank you. Para CIA Committee Meeting, Ms. Mr. Morris, Ms. Taylor. Your next meeting date is to be determined. Technology Committee Meeting, Ms. Taylor, Mr. Buchanan. Your next meeting date is to be determined. Strategic Planning Committee Meeting, Committee Meeting, that's all of board members. Our next meeting date is to be determined. Community Engagement Committee Meeting, Ms. Griffin, Mr. Buchanan. That makes meeting date is to be determined. Negotiations Committee Meeting, Ms. Griffin, Mr. Hannah. That next meeting date is to be determined. Any public comments? There are none? Okay, can I have a motion to move into closed session?
I moved that the board going to closed session under Illinois School Code one twenty slash two C one and eight to discuss the appointment. Employment, compensation, discipline, performance of a specific employee of the public body. And the use of personnel at six forty-eight P M.
Board Member Hannah, I second. Roll call please.
For President Hannah. For Vice President Taylor. For Secretary Griffin. For Member Buchanan. For Member Dawson. For Member Morris, absent, for Member Williams Wilford, absent.
Motion carries. Thank you all for coming. We are now moving into closed session.